Madam Clerk, you want to do the roll?
Suveriser Brettafield.
Here.
Suveriser Chavez.
Here.
Suveriser Magsick.
Here.
Suveriser Pacheco.
Here.
Chairman Mendez.
I'm here.
All present, thank you.
Okay, welcome to the September 9th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin with the invocation and flag salute. The invocation will be led by District 2. After the invocation, remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you Chairman. This morning, we have Pastor Levy, Brad Levy from People's Church. Pastor Levy grew up in Wisconsin and has served across the United States and internationally in various ministries. He's been serving at People's Church since 2014. Has been married to his wife, Jana, I hope he's saying it right, Jana, for 34 years and has three children. Thank you Pastor Levy for joining us this morning. Appreciate it.
Let's pray. Dear Jesus, we come before you today praying that you'll help us serve this community well. We thank you that your scripture teaches us that you place people in an authority, that you care about all mankind, that you have a desire to see people served, loved, protected, and taken care of. So, thank you for this wonderful group of people that you've placed in positions of power to look over our county, to govern our county. We pray that you give them wisdom, we pray that you give them grace, we pray that you give them kindness. We pray, Lord, that not only would decisions be made that would honor you and honor this county, but Lord, we also pray that discussions would take place in a way that are honoring of you and all things as well. So bless this day, bless these people, and bless the decisions that are made in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agendas are in the back for anyone wanting to follow along. So, Madam Clerk.
Item number one, approve agenda.
I'll move for approval.
You got a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
In terms of recusals, you want to do that?
Yeah, we'll do that next.
Yeah, well, I have an item before the consent that I would have to recuse on. Should I say it now?
This would be the time, if you're on the regular that you need to recuse.
Yeah, I need to recuse on number nine as well as 39 due to contribution limits.
Okay, thank you Gary.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I think we have a, we'll have to do lots for 39, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That will be under item two.
Alrighty. So we got a motion and a second. All in favor is going to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda, items 18 through 48. As mentioned by Suveriser Brettafield, he's pulling item 39 due to the Levine Act.
I have the same issue, Madam Clerk, number 39.
As do I, and also I need to pull item 45 for the Levine Act as well.
Okay.
So is there anybody in the public that wants to pull any items? On consent, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move for approval of the remainder.
Thank you.
Second.
I got a second. All in favor is going to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll do those after four.
Yes, we'll hear those after four. We now move to item number three, under Suveriser Brettafield proclaim September 16, 2025 as Information Technology Professionals Appreciation Day and September 15 through the 19, 2025 as Information Technology Professionals Appreciation Week in the County of Fresno.
Okay Supervisor Brettafield.
Yes, thank you. Wow, we got a lot of folks here. Excellent. Come on up please. Earlier this year, the county reorganized its Internal Services Department into the Information Technology Services Department, ITSD, and the General Services Department. This reorganization was done to better align with each department's specific disciplines, allowing for more specialized and efficient operations. As part of this reorganization, a new Director of IT, Chief Information Officer, was appointed to lead ITSD. This proclamation is meant to formally recognize the crucial role that IT professionals play in maintaining the seamless operation of the county's essential technology infrastructure. And I believe we have Mike Kerr and Sherri Walden here and all these great folks to discuss that.
Good morning, thank you Chairman, members of the board. I am Mike Kerr. I'm the Director of Information Technology Services and CIO for the County of Fresno. On behalf of, this is just a small group of the information technology professionals we have, but on behalf of all of us, we want to say thank you for proclaiming September 16, 2025 as Information Technology Professionals Appreciation Day and September 15 through 19 as Information Technology Professionals Appreciation Week. This recognition highlights the critical work the county IT teams provide, mostly behind the scenes, to ensure that county systems are secure, reliable, and responsive to the needs of the departments so that we may better serve our fellow Frezons. From supporting public safety operations to enabling remote services and maintaining cybersecurity, IT professionals play a key role in keeping Fresno County and helping Fresno County deliver essential services efficiently and effectively. Thank you for shining a light on the important work being performed by the IT staff. We are honored by this proclamation and grateful for your support and recognition. Thank you.
Just want to thank our folks, as you know, I've kind of navigated the new world of county. IT has definitely been a big need, so thank you for helping me set up. And I think as the first supervisor officially go paperless, thank you very much for that. We're saving some trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, actually, I'm looking over at Luis's table and he's got lots of papers, so don't let him fool you. Just thank you for all that you do. My computer works. When I turn it on every morning, I think of you, so thank you for all that you do.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm also grateful, I'm also grateful for all the work you do. It's very critical work for our operations and you do it very well, and so we're all grateful, and that's why we're recognizing you. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm very grateful because without you, we function with bear skins and stone knives and string phones. So thank you very much and very critical, very critical.
Right, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? I will take a motion. Okay, second. All in favor is going to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, please come up and we'll attempt to take a picture with all of you.
Go ahead. One, two, three, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to item number four, under Suveriser Magsick proclaim September 2025 as National Preparedness Month in the County of Fresno.
And I know that we have Terry here from Department of Public Health, and I saw a lot of other first responders that are here too. So I think it's very apropos that we are making this recognition today about Preparedness Month. And I think on September 20th, there is a workshop, open house, it's going to be taking place at Pelco. I think Terry might be talking a little bit more about that. But if you can introduce who is here with you, I think it's good that we've got representatives from other agencies, because whenever there's a disaster, we all have to work together. So Terry, the floor is yours.
Absolutely. It's a complete team event, just as our Preparedness Fair that you referenced on the 20th. We've been partnering directly with the City of Clovis and the City of Fresno to prepare and plan for it, but we have Jason Passmore, who works in the Office of Emergency Services for the county, as does Sarah Villa. We have Jeff Gwynn and Chief Johnson, who worked for Fresno Fire. We have Lieutenant Gilbert, who is our contact with the Sheriff's Department. Dan Lynch is my manager, so he oversees us directly. We have Ryan Acipian from Cal OES, he is our area rep from the state. Dave Davis works in the OES office, and then of course, we have our sheriff, who is a great assistance in everything that we do as well. But yes, we'd love to extend an invitation to our Preparedness Fair on the 20th. It'll be held at the DSS Building, that's right on the corner of Villa and Pontiac, right across from the 9/11 Memorial. And really what the intent is, is to prepare our county constituents in any way we can, whether it's health-related, fire-preparedness. So we'll have many different law enforcements and fire personnel out there with their displays of vehicles, and then we have quite a few nonprofits, county and city organizations that will have booths. And then we're very excited also, we're partnering with CVS, who will be doing a free shot clinic for flu shots, and then we also have United Healthcare, who will be out there doing blood pressure checks. So it'll be quite the event, it'll be from nine to one, we'll have some food booths out there, and also some music with a radio station. So we're really hoping we get a great turnout.
With the Garnet Fire, I don't think any private properties, people who live on private property have been displaced yet, but if so, do you have a quick update? And if things change with that fire, what are you doing to respond quickly?
Absolutely. In preparation, just knowing how quickly fire can spread in the mountains, last week we opened up our emergency operations center at a low level, so it's been pretty much our immediate staff with a couple of other people added in here and there. And that's what we've been doing for the last week and a half, is planning for if and when that happens. So Jason oversees our sheltering operation for our office, he's already been in contact. It moves, so when the fire was really towards the south, then that's where we start looking at shelters, because to make it the least amount of impact to move people, now that it's more on the west and the north side, we're looking more Clovis, a north Fresno area for sheltering. So that is something that we continually need to plan. Lieutenant Gilbert and I attend all of the briefings, we have a cooperators briefing every morning that we attend to, so we're always trying to get the most up-to-date information we can.
Do you have any update on the Salt Fire?
I don't. Lieutenant Gilbert, do you have anything?
Oh, it's looking really good.
Yeah, I know they've been moving resources to help with the Garnet Fire, so I'm not fire person, but I would imagine that it's doing pretty well.
Well, that's a pure bulldoze of fire, so.
Yeah.
It's a little different animal.
Yeah, yeah. We haven't.
I keep forgetting to call Mark Pimentel, who's one of the guys that came in with the state for fight that fire, so.
Yeah, initially on the Salt Fire, there was a concern for animals, and so I worked with Rick Heinrichs, and we were able to get everything staged to open up a large animal shelter, would have been, you know, within an hour if needed. Thankfully, that was never needed, so, yeah.
Because usually they can drive the cattle out of, into another area.
Yeah, that's exactly what they ended up doing, yeah.
Any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the board.
I'll move for approval.
You got a second? All in favor is going to say an aye.
Aye.
Okay, please come up.
Supervisor Magsick recused himself, adopt plans and specifications for contract 25-01-CD, County Service Area CSA 44A Wastewater Facility Improvements Community Development Block Grant Project Number 21271.
Good morning, Supervisors. There is one correction to this item, and the recommended actions don't have numbers. It's supposed to be one and two, I'm noticing. We're just adopting plans and specifications for contract 2501 CD, County Service Area 44A, and we are awarding the base bid and additive one. Available for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Is there any public comment on this item?
Okay, great.
Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion approved.
Okay, second. All in favor, so can I say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
For the record, what was your corrections to this item? So, to correct the record, there are no issues. It's her copy that's incorrect, not ours. That concludes all the consent items pulled from this morning. We take up item number five, under the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector Conduct Hearing on Petition by Attorney Trevor D. Martin on behalf of Tina A. Lopez, daughter of previous assessee of the property, Martin C. Lopez, to rescind the county sale of APN Number 460-123-02, described as 3718 East Washington, Fresno.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. Oscar Garcia, Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, we're here before you to do a presentation to make sure that you allow this tax sale, because we did everything we were supposed to do, and that Einlman is going to go ahead and present it as soon as she gets that up.
Good morning, Mrs. Chairman and members of the Board. So, hearing on petition to rescind June 2025 tax sale of item number 251, subject parcel 460123-02, located on 3718 East Washington, Fresno, part of Supervisory District Number Three.
All right.
Party of interest, previous assessee, when the parcel was sold at public auction, Martin C. Lopez, deceased. Petitioners, Trevor D. Martin, legal representative of Tina A. Lopez, daughter of the previous assessee, Martin C. Lopez. Purchaser, Gerber S. Surpras and Sunjit S. Surpras. The tax collector will present that all statutory process will follow and that additional time was given to assist representative to settle the sale of the property. Here's the image of the subject property from parcel quest. Context, California Revenue and Taxation Code Section 3706.1 allowed the tax collector to postpone tax sale or any portion if certain condition are met. One of the condition, it postponed between eight to 90 days after the original sale date, the tax collector must give notice to party of interest the same way the original sale date. Context, continue. After considering the subject submitted documentation, the tax collector approved the postpone of the sale of the subject property to allow the private property to finalize the sale. This parcel was pulled from the scheduled March 27, 2025 tax sale. The tax sale of the subject property was postponed for 78 days. Subject property went to tax sale on June 13, 2025 tax sale and was sold. Subject parcel history, the subject parcel was subject to the tax collector's power to sell two times before it was sold at the June 2025 tax sale. July 16, 2018, Document 2018-0083876, was redeemed on 2/18/2019, redeemed by Ms. Tina Lopez, the petitioner. On July 15, 2024, Document 20240062124, it went to tax sales again. There was no redemption scheduled for March 2025 tax sale, but postponement of tax sale was granted. The postponement request, on January 30, 2025, Unlatch, a real estate and probate service company acting on behalf of the heir, requested a postponement of the subject parcel stating that a court hearing was scheduled for May 6, 2025 to complete the probate process. Quote from the request, first quote, "We are currently working with the heirs to of the property and have a purchase agreement to buy the property once the probate process is complete." Second quote, "The attorney, quote, 'have given them a court date of May 6, 2025 to finalize the title and proceed with the sale of the property. This date is well after the auction. Please let me know if you can, if we can have the auction postponed until after May 6 court date." On February 10, the tax collector granted the postponement after reviewing the relevant facts and circumstances of the request. This would allow petitioner time to settle the sale of the property. On February 11, Unlatch representative confirmed their understanding, stating that the intent was to complete the sale of the property before the postponed tax sale. Tax collector, per request, provided June 6, 2025 as the potential tax sale date. The postponed tax sale was held on June 13, 2025, a week after the initial date provided. This granted more time to the petitioner to conclude the sale of the property. Claim made in the petition, the petitioner believes the sale process contained irregularities and timing issue that must be addressed. First, petitioners say the Fresno County Superior Court delayed processing the submitted probate documentation. The order was received on May 5, 2025, but was not signed by the court until June 6, 2025. Petitioner claims that because county was aware of the property was in escrow and the email stated that notice would be sent, the purchaser believed in good faith that they would be provided, at a minimum, a courtesy notice or email regarding the sale. The petitioner, Ms. Lopez, stated that she did not see the personal contact notification affixed to the resident. Petitioner complained that the county did not provide a receipt for the certified mailing of the tax sale notification. In the following slide, the tax collector's office will address the petitioner claims. Alleged irregularity number one, the Fresno County Superior Court delayed processing the submitted probate documents. The order was received on May 5, 2025, but was not signed by the court until June 6, 2025. Reply to alleged irregularity number two and four. The June 13, 2025 re-offered tax sale took place 78 days after the original scheduled sale date. In accordance with the Revenue and Taxation Code Section 3706.1, all required notices were sent again to all party of interest. Notice of power to sale will mail again on April 28, 2025. Personal contact was attempted again on May 28, 2025. Notice was posted on the property. Revenue and Taxation Code Section 3701B state, "The tax collector shall make a reasonable effort to obtain the last name and last known mailing address of party of interest." At the time of notices were sent, the petition and Unlatch representative were not party of interest, because neither of them had a record interest in the property. Continue. Notice of power to sale, for initial March 2025 tax sale, the notice of party of interest was sent on January 13. Notice was sent to both the assessee and the occupant of the property. Both the letters addressed to Martin C. Lopez and the occupant have been confirmed received with signature, and that's the image of the signed receipt. Continue. June 2025 tax sale, tax sale notice was mailed on April 28, using the same method as above. Both letter to Martin C. Lopez and occupant will return to our office on June 20, which was after the June 13 tax sale, because they did not come back after the, until the tax, after the tax sale, skip tracing could not be performed. Alleged irregularity number three, the petitioner, Ms. Lopez, stated that she did not see the personal contact notification affixed to the resident. Reply to alleged irregularity number three, on February 10, when the postponement was approved, preparation for the personal contact was already underway. As such, the subject property also received a personal contact visit on March 5, 2025. No one came to the door, so the notice was affixed to the door of the property. On March 6, Unlatch representative reached out to the tax collector's office regarding the notice of tax sale posted on the property. The tax collector's office confirmed that the sale has been, had been postponed. And that's the image from the March 6, 2025 personal contact visit. This is the copy of the notice affixed to the door for March 2025 personal contact conducted on March 5, 2025, including declaration on the penalty of perjury regarding the notice. And continue, on March 28, 2025, the tax collector's office conducted another personal contact visit for the June 13 tax sale. No one came to the door, and the notice was affixed on the door of the property in the same manner as it was done on March 6, 2025. The petitioner claimed that the notice was not seen. A copy of the notice affixed to the door for the June 20, 25 personal contact conducted on May 28, including declaration on the penalty of perjury. Summary, in February, the tax collector agreed to postpone the sale because the request said that the sale of the property would be completed within 90 days, so that taxes would be paid from the proceed. The tax collector estimated that the postponement sale would occur on June 6, and the request said that would be enough time. The postponement sale ultimately occurred a week later than that, on June 13, but the request had not completed the sale by then. The tax collector gave all notices required by law for the postponed tax sale. The request did not reach out to the tax collector until the postponed sale had already been completed. Four findings necessary to rescind the sale. One, the property should not have been sold. Two, property was not transferred or conveyed by purchaser to a bona fide purchaser for value, since the deed to the purchaser was recorded on June 30, 2025. Property, three, property has not become subject to a bona fide incumbent for value, since the deed to purchaser as recorded on June 30, 2025. And four, the purchaser received notice of the hearing as required by the Revenue and Taxation Code Section 3731 subdivision B2. Recommendation, staff believe that the first finding that the property should not have been sold cannot be made. Example for when property should not have been sold at a tax sale include, one, when the property was timely redeemed but then erroneously listed for auction and sold; two, when the property owner filed for bankruptcy, which should have stopped the sale, but the tax collector proceeded to sell the property anyway; or three, when the tax collector failed to give all notices required by law before the sale. The property was not redeemed, there was no bankruptcy, and the tax collector gave all notice required by law before the sale. Therefore, the sale to the property is valid. Staff's recommendation is to not rescind the sale. Concluding.
I believe the representatives from the original, Ms. Lopez is here, or the representative?
So, this has been a very painful process. This property's been my home for 47 years. It's my dad's home. I eventually came to the point I couldn't maintain the home, I had to let it go, I couldn't pay. I had to stop working due to illness, so I had to let it go and sell my dad's house. I know it was way over my head, so I hired a company to help me with the probate. Fresno County postponed the court date, as well as got the paper that the probate company needed, which is why it was late. We didn't know you guys could sell my house without notifying me. I noticed on there, they said that they posted a notice on the door in June. I didn't see the flash for that. The March one we did get, which is when Unlatch called and spoke with them, but I didn't see the, what is that, that, you guys didn't take a picture in front of the door, you went to the curb to take a picture? What is that paper? Can you?
It's the picture.
But we have to take your word for that, because that could be anything. Why didn't your person go to take the door picture and not on the curb?
To show that we actually visited the property.
Uh huh. That doesn't show, that shows there's a paper tape there, it doesn't show what the paper is.
As mentioned, the posting that we affixed to the door actually is on the penalty of perjury, and two people signed it.
Okay, that's fine. But that, that paper doesn't, it doesn't show me what that paper on the door is? Again, because, why, why did you guys think to take a picture of that from the curb and not up front?
It's to show proof that we visited the property. If we only took picture of the image of the door, it doesn't show actually we visited the property.
Okay, well, that could have been anything. We did get the one in March, which the company called and worked it out with them, but the point is, I am homeless. As of September 15, I will be sleeping in my car. I have nowhere to go. I was unable to work. We depended on that money to provide us with a home. I have lost everything in this world. Because the, the house was auctioned, I didn't get the money, we didn't have money for movers, boxes, or storage. Because of Fresno County's actions, I lost everything I own in a burglary, because I didn't have the money to move this. Is this funny? I didn't have the money to move my property. So now I officially own seven pairs of pants, seven shirts, seven socks, two bras, and seven under. twenty twenty five. No one came to the door, so the notice was affixed to the door of the property. On March sixth, unlatch representative reached out to the tax collector's office regarding the notice of tax sale posting on the property. The tax collector's office confirmed that the sale has been had been postponed. And that's the image from the March sixth, twenty twenty five personal contact visit. This is the copy of the notice affixed to the door for March twenty twenty five personal contact conducted on March fifth, twenty twenty five, including declaration on the penalty of perjury regarding the notice. And continue. On March twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, the tax collector's office conducted another personal contact visit for the June thirteenth tax sale. No one came to the door, and the notice was affixed on the door of the property in the same manner as it was done on March sixth, twenty twenty five. The petitioner claimed that the notice was not seen. A copy of the notice affixed to the door for the June twentieth, twenty five personal contact conducted on May twenty eighth, including declaration on the penalty of perjury. Summary. In February, the tax collector agreed to postpone the sale because the requester said that a sale of the property would be completed within ninety days, so that taxes would be paid from the proceed. The tax collector estimated that the postponement sale would occur on June sixth, and the requestor said that would be enough time. The postponement sale ultimately occurred a week later than that, on June thirteenth, but the requestor had not completed the sale by then. The tax collector gave all notices required by law for the postponed tax sale. The requestor did not reach out to the tax collector until the postponed sale had already been completed. Four findings necessary to rescind the sale. One, the property should not have been sold. Two, property was not transferred or conveyed by purchasers to a bona fide purchaser for value, since the deed to the purchaser was recorded on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Property. Three, property has not become subject to a bona fide incumbent for value, since the deed to purchaser as recorded on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And four, the purchaser received notice of the hearing as required by the Revenue and Taxation Code, Section thirty seven, thirty one, subdivision B two. Recommendation. Staff believe that the first finding that the property should not have been sold cannot be made. Example for when property should not have been sold at a tax sale include, one, when the property was timely redeemed, but then erroneously listed for auction and sold; two, when the property owner filed for bankruptcy, which should have stopped the sale, but the tax collector proceeded to sell the property anyway; or three, when the tax collector failed to give all notices required by law before the sale. The property was not redeemed, there was no bankruptcy, and the tax collector gave all notice required by law before the sale. Therefore, the sale to the property is valid. Staff's recommendation is to not rescind the sale. Concluding.
I believe the representatives from the original Ms. Lopez is here or the representative?
So this has been a very painful process. This property's been my home for forty-seven years. It's my dad's home. I eventually came to the point I couldn't maintain the home. I had to let it go. I couldn't pay. I had to stop working due to illness, so I had to let it go and sell my dad's house. I know it was way over my head, so I hired a company to help me with the probate. Fresno County postponed the court date as well as got the paper that the probate company needed, which is why it was late. We didn't know you guys could sell my house without notifying me. I noticed on there they said that they posted a notice on the door in June. I didn't see the flash for that. The March one we did get, which is when unlatch called and spoke with them, but I didn't see the what is that that you guys didn't take a picture in front of the door? You went to the curb to take a picture? What is that paper? Can you?
It's the picture.
But we have to take your word for that, because that could be anything. Why didn't your person go to take the door picture and not on the curb?
To show that we actually visited the property.
Uh huh. That doesn't show that shows there's a paper tape there. It doesn't show what the paper is.
As mentioned, the posting that we affixed to the door actually is on the penalty of perjury, and two people signed it.
Okay, that's fine. But that that paper doesn't it doesn't show me what that paper on the door is? Again, because why why did you guys think to take a picture of that from the curb and not up front?
It's to show proof that we visited the property. If we only took picture of the image of the door, it doesn't show actually we visited the property.
Okay, well, that could have been anything. We did get the one in March, which the company called and worked it out with them. But the point is, I am homeless. As of September fifteenth, I will be sleeping in my car. I have nowhere to go. I was unable to work. We depended on that money to provide us with a home. I have lost everything in this world because the the house was auctioned. I didn't get the money. We didn't have money for movers, boxes, or storage. Because of Fresno County's actions, I lost everything I own in a burglary, because I didn't have the money to move this. Is this funny? I didn't have the money to move my property. So now I officially own seven pairs of pants, seven shirts, seven socks, two bras, and seven underwear. Everything I have is gone. We depended on this money not only to not be homeless, but to get my things things out of the home before it was gone. Seventy-six Chevy step side was also stolen, but there are proof that they 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 let us know is a faraway paper on the door, and that's it. Now, that's that paper could have been anything. I don't I don't know when that paper was put there because I didn't see it. The March one, they have, you know, given us. We did call the winner of the bid to let him know it's not about selling the property. The property is going to get sold regardless. The lawyer requested that he rescind the sale and the property be sold to him. The thing is, I cannot wait a year to get the proceeds from that house. I had worked out a plan with the people handling my case, that everything would to be taken care of, you guys would get your taxes, which I do owe. We finally got all the paperwork needed from Fresno County on June thirteenth. That's when we got the final piece from Fresno County. The I'm not sure if it was a paralegal or title company, or somebody went to go file. We had already paid all of the liens on the house. We paid those. All the liens on the house had been paid. They were on their way to the court to go do whatever they have to do there, pay the taxes and file whatever they needed to do. That's when they called me that the property has already been sold. Had we known this, it would have been taken care of. There's no way we were going to let the house go. They would have paid the taxes before, but we moved as soon as we got the papers from Fresno County. We weren't notified. And and I don't want to cheat the man that won the bid at all. I've called him and talked to him. There was an issue. I guess the company had told the winning the winning bid a different number, higher than what he paid, and and that was not per my instructions. I don't expect him to do that. I called him myself and said, you don't you can have it for to have it for. It's not about selling the house. It's already has to be sold. I have to walk away from forty-seven years of my life because I couldn't. I let my dad down. I couldn't hold on to the house. I couldn't do what needed to be done. Now I'm homeless and I own nothing, but I don't want the person that won that bid to be out either. He was told he could have it by me personally. He can have it for what he bid, and we never got a call back. Then, as I said, there's been the burglary happened, three, three days, three burglaries.
Yeah. You about got it wrapped up here?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Who's the other person that stood up?
The purchasers here as well, right?
Okay.
Am I done?
Yeah.
Do you want to hear the purchaser's side, or?
Not really.
I believe she was talking about the courts, not waiting on the county, waiting on the courts.
Okay, I'm gonna let Louise.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to your auditor controller. I did not have an opportunity to speak with the with the property owners. They didn't contact my office, but I really feel, and I sympathize with your position, Ms. Lopez. I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I grew up a couple of blocks from there, so I know a lot of the families, and and I know it's tough when you, you know, lose your home, especially your your father. These situations obviously have a lot of legal implications. I did meet with our auditor controller, Mr. Garcia, walked me through the same process that we have here. I believe we did contact the property owners. We did do our our due diligence. I really also believe that you got some really bad advice from folks that, you know, advised you to do this. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Auditor, so because this process was initiated per tax code, that's she's entitled to the one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, correct?
But that will be for about a year or so when we bring it back to the board.
And is that because this process was initiated?
Because of tax sale, correct. But it's going to go out, and they're going to have to petition us to see who is in line to get those excess proceeds.
So I guess my question is, does does the the petitioner asking our board to weigh in delay the year? So for example, if she withdrew her request or she had not petitioned, would she have been entitled to that one hundred and twenty-two thousand right away? Would she still have?
She's still going to have to wait for that year.
Because of the process that that we have to 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 go through on there. That that was the only thing that I was considering, if we could maybe have her pull the petition, but if you're telling me that that's already set. Unfortunately, I think we've satisfied our legal requirement. I don't think there's anything else that we can do unless we have other options. My colleagues have seen other situations. I know in the past we've dealt with issues that were just, you know, a little bit different with business transactions and parties that were not involved, but, I mean, you have everything documented on here, not just with pictures, but documents.
Believe if I can ask counsel, we can speed that up potentially if there's no, as far as getting that excess proceeds to her?
You can't speed up the one-year claim.
How much timeframe do we have?
You may not speed up the one-year claim period. You must allow one year for claims for excess proceeds, and then after that one year is up, you could you could move quickly on the claims for just this one property.
And that one year started in June or starts today?
The one year starts when the deed is recorded, which I think you said was in June.
Okay.
So she would have to wait till June of 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 next year to claim her excess proceeds, correct?
September, right?
She can file a claim now for excess proceeds. It's just that the the claims period must remain open until next June, and then only after the claims period closes does the auditor's office begin looking at all the claims that have been received, and then come back to your board with a recommendation on those.
What other potential claims could be?
There could be there could be lien holders, for example.
We don't know what we don't know right now, so.
Yeah, it's basically you don't know what you don't know.
Right, right. No, no, exactly. I mean, I wish we were in a different situation. If you hadn't notified the the property owners and gone through the due diligence, I'd be open to, I mean, with 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 the facts that we have, I think we have to adhere to the process, and I think you did do your due diligence. And I feel bad for Ms. Lopez. There's not much we can do on there. So what's the motion is to deny the petition?
Need any other public comment before we?
I would like to speak.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Lance Armon, and I'm the attorney for Mr. Sopraj. Two points. One is there's several other remedies or procedures that the claimant could have done other than the course she took. Two, my client paid more than the requested amount. So so in fact, I think it was in excess of ten thousand dollars more than the requested amount. And then the last thing is that there are ways that she can go about receiving money. It's a very unfortunate situation. I concur with that. But there are ways that she can go about receiving money on what she believes she may be entitled to without waiting the year. It has nothing to do with the county, and she just needs to to go down that path. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that process. I didn't want to get into the space of us providing financial advice to folks, but there are options for Ms. Lopez to to pursue. With that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny the petition.
Okay. Got a second? All in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my apologies. I did not announce that an item needed to be deleted from your consent, and your esteemed C O Nurlin brought it to my attention. So if you'll bear with me, I believe we need to, with county council's approval, I believe we need to reconsider item number two to approve the consent agenda numbers. The one item that we're looking at specifically is item forty-eight, so we'll need a motion for the board to reconsider item two, and then I can make the announcement, and you guys can take action on it.
Do you hear?
Motion to reconsider?
Yeah. Got a second? All in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
So what's the next deal? So it's to rescind?
Next thing is, you've opened item two, approve consent agenda, item numbers eighteen through forty-eight. Item forty-eight should have been announced deleted under Social Services. It should be deleted.
Okay.
So if we could take action on that.
All right. Somebody want? Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you.
My apologies for delaying.
You don't make very many mistakes.
I apologize. I had it in my notes.
We'll have to put it on a plaque, please made a mistake at this meeting.
I apologize in delaying your meeting. We now move to item number five point one under the administrative offices, adopt resolution proclaiming and ratifying a local emergency as a result of the twenty twenty-five Salt fourteen dash two fire.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. As you know, on Thursday, September fourth, I signed another proclamation of emergency for the salt fire. I think there's already been discussion during a prior item on what's happening with the salt fire and and also what we're doing with the Garnet Fire. So I can answer any questions that you may have, but the recommended action is to ratify the proclamation that I signed September fourth.
Think we're good, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Is there any public comment on this before I give it back to the board? Hearing none?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Who made that motion?
I did.
Thank you. We now move to item number six under the administrative office, approve and authorize chairman to execute retroactive revenue agreement with Central Valley Community Foundation for collaboration participation in the Sierra Sand walking jobs coalition of California Jobs First effective February first, twenty twenty five through January thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Again, good morning, Chairman, and members of the board. Item number six was on your gen agenda about a month ago and is being brought back by consensus for discussion. I can summarize the details of it and answer questions, but I'll look to you first to see if you'd like to make comments, or would you like me to summarize what the item's about?
We already talked about it. I'm ready to to vote.
Okay, I will all wait for comments or questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do remember this item when it came back, and I do remember exactly what what I said and my concerns were, that this was an item that essentially took away the the say and the authority that this board has. I've had subsequent conversations with the folks over at the Central Valley Foundation. I'd see what attended a meeting with our C O O to just kind of get a preview of what this was about, and 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 it is not about taking local control away from boards. There were other counties there at the table as well. I believe Tulare, Kings, and Madera were at the table as well, but I really feel like there's value in us being a part of a conversation. At the same time, I want to make sure that I'm very clear that this board should decide what our policies look like with regards to the energy industry that will be built here in the Central Valley. And we did have a meeting with the Secretary of National Resources and Water, and also the Agricultural Secretary. I was at that meeting, so I do think there's value, there's consensus on this board. We're more than happy to 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 help and participate in any way I can to make sure that this board continues to be at the forefront of of these policy conversations.
Okay. Any other comments? Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, I I expressed some concerns just about the the agenda that will be there related to climate solutions and one hundred percent clean energy. Is there support of turning everything every vehicle electric? I don't know. Also about land use planning and permitting and what impacts those recommendations would have on just our own general plan. So I'm uncomfortable with it and don't really have faith in the process, so I'm not going to support this today.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would just add, I concur with both of my colleagues' comments. However, I too have had further discussion, got clarification. My additional concern was that the amount of staff time doing this. I've had a conversation with our C O. It's my understanding that the person committing to this project and this process will come from the C O's office and with assistance from Public Works, and with that, I am more more comfortable with this, like Supervisor Chavez concerned about local control. And while I'm a bit skeptical, like Supervisor Brettafield, I believe it's better to participate than to to not, so I would be up for supporting this item as well.
Well, I'm also very uncomfortable with this deal, and I don't know why the state would be paying a nonprofit to to shepherd this, and I'm very much against it. I feel there's something hidden that we don't know about. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, for me, I think it's good to have a seat at the table, and at the end of the day, whatever is put together has to be voted on by this board. So at some point, if we feel that the plan is not in alignment with the values of this county, then we have an opportunity to to vote against it. So at this point, I'm willing to be supportive, so that's.
Well, what I'm afraid of, you know, I I see your point, but what I'm afraid of is we'll vote no, but there'll be a document out there saying we need to do this, and then we'll it will be held, you know, that'll be held against us, even though the conclusion of everything was totally wrong.
That is possible.
Yeah, and I just want to add my point. You know, we have a similar kind of thing with the COG and the transportation for all. You know, the the argument was that it can come back to COG and these boards, and you can vote out down anything that comes from a steering committee, but once you, you know, give twelve people the ability to direct a document, as you say, and it goes out, just as they had a press conference yesterday, it's hard to pull that back. And so once we engage in this process, even though we may not support what comes back, we have participated. It gives some credence to it, and I just have a mistrust of of the agenda, and I've seen the agenda from from this organization before, and it's not an agenda that I typically agree with, and so that's why I won't support it, but I appreciate all the comments from from everybody, understand the positions.
And Mr. Chairman, one other, just a few other comments. So I've had an opportunity to to meet with the Central Valley Community Foundation about this, and I've been been very clear. So I look at, you know, where do most of the greenhouse gas emissions come from? It's not the fossil fuel industry. It's actually from the health of our forests. So I laid out a number of things that we need to be looking at: large-scale hydroelectric, nuclear. If those are not part of this plan, then this plan really isn't looking at ways to reduce the cost of energy and actually clean up our air. But we need to be realistic at what's driving pollution, and I've laid all that out. So if a plan comes back that really doesn't focus on forest health, large-scale hydro, more water storage, then I think the the criticisms that are up here will be absolutely true, so we'll see. We'll see what happens, but I'm willing to I'm willing to offer my hand and see what comes back.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could just provide some context there, I asked some of these questions that we're discussing here at the meeting, and the Secretary of Natural Resources and Water was very forthcoming with regards to there being thirteen regents in the state that they're focusing on with the energy and water and and, you know, land use and zoning. I I understand that there these conversations are going to happen anyway, but the part that to me that was more luring was the fact that they are now mapping out large infrastructure lines on where the power grid will go, and I think that's an opportunity for us to be at the table and steer that conversation with Fresno County being such a large county in the region. And the benefit that I see potentially could be a fast-track approach on some of these projects that are coming down the pipeline with regards to manufacturing, food processing plants, and then water, which is a big need here in the Central Valley. So I had I had some of those same reservations, and I'll be the first to to say we should pull out if if any of those conversations don't align with with what's beneficial for our constituents.
I just have one last comment. You know, you want to be at the table, but you don't want to be fed an Excrement sandwich. Okay? All righty. Is there any public comment on this item before I bring it back to the board? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
What's the motion? Is it to deny?
You want to do a roll call vote?
Suizmo Chavez? Suizmo Chaco?
Yes.
Suizmo Brettafield?
No.
Suizmo Maxic?
Aye.
Chairman Mendez?
No, I don't want to eat an Excrement sandwich.
Three, two with Suizmo.
Okay.
Mendez and?
Brettafield.
Brettafield voting no. Thank you. Motion passes. We now move to item number seven under the administrative office, approve and adopt administrative policy eighty-one, department celebrations and recognition.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. At the August fifth board meeting, I presented your I presented your board with options and sought direction on a process for departments when celebrating or recognizing holidays, themes, days, weeks, or months. Your board directed the creation of a policy to memorialize this direction. And so what you have before you today is a proposed administrative policy 81. It would allow county departments to officially and publicly celebrate or recognize those holidays, themes, events, days, weeks, or months that were approved prior to their occurrence by a majority of your board, by resolution or proclamation through the agenda item process. Any approval would remain unless a majority of your board rescinds the approval. This policy also allows that if there was a celebration that arises that, in my judgment, representing all of you, would be approved by your body, that it would, it came to the department head's attention prior to a scheduled meeting, that it would grant me the discretion to approve that celebration subject to ratification by your board at a later date. That would only occur if there was something that came up that couldn't make the board date, but I believed your board would support it. There is some discretion in the policy as well that speaks to events that are, what would be described as ordinary workplace festivities. This is not covering that, such as employees' birthdays, retirements, and milestones. And so I'll stop at this point to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the board have any questions, or go ahead?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm fully supportive of this. The only thing I would change is on page two, where it says the recommended AP 81 provides that it does not affect ordinary workplace festivities by and among employees, such as you outlined, Mr. CIO, the employee birthdays, employee retirements, employee milestones. I would take out an employee organized holiday festivities, because I think that creates some confusion. If we remove that, it just outlines what you just said, that everything, you know, the employees, such as employee birthdays and retirements, employee milestones are accepted. There's no problem with that. But if you have employee organized holiday festivities, I think it creates some confusion. And so I would suggest that we approve this without that phrase, and then I think it's more clear. So I'd make a motion to approve the item and just remove that one phrase.
I have a question on that, on that specific request, concern with Surizo Brettafield. Don't employees have their own lunchtime and breaks where they could engage in activities that they organize themselves part, or how would that work out logistically?
They do, and the limitations that would be there, even apart from this policy, would be how it affects interactions with the public. And so I know there's been comments in the past as far as the decorate, you know, how that is done. And whatever we do, we want to make sure that it doesn't interrupt with our services to the public. But apart from that, yes, there's many employee events that are just during a lunch hour or mainly, probably mainly during lunch.
And they would be free to engage in any activity they want during their lunch hour, right? Because I don't want to open us up for exposure for discrimination or liability or anything of that sort.
It would be pending the, how that affects the services to the public. So, you know, if it affected that in some way, there could be limitations put on that. So I would, pending the approval of this policy today, put together a management directive that more clearly defines what that would look like.
So then we'll come back again?
No, that would be... So when you approve this policy, it's the general policy. Then, as your CIO, I put out a management directive that puts, essentially implements, and it gets into the, how we do it going forward.
Okay. This is the part that I think is a little bit tricky for us to get into that space. I think it just opens it up. I think you had left it there. I really think employees should be free to do whatever they want during their lunchtime and their free time. I'm just not comfortable censoring folks, even on their own free time.
I actually, Mr. Chairman, I would concur with Supervisor Chavez. I appreciate Supervisor's Brettafield clarification. However, a person's lunch is their lunch, and even if they are at lunch, will not impact services in any way, shape, or form, because during their lunch, they are not to work for us in any way, shape, or form. So I don't really feel that's an adequate answer to say impacting services, because their lunchtime is their lunchtime. And we have no control over what they do or how they do on their lunch. So again, I did not support this when it came before us. I appreciate the clarification, but I think it just creates more problems, and again, will not be supporting this moving forward today.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
For me, as I read this, I don't think it does, when people want to have their lunch in their, in their own places, they can do that. But what this is about, I think, is those areas where we have county spaces that interface with the public. So I think this policy, what it's getting at is those particular spaces. But I don't read this that someone on their lunch, when they're somewhere else, not facing the public, would be affected by this. So, and actually, with the language that Supervisor Brettafield asked to be stricken, in my eyes, it opens up, these are examples given of what are still going to be allowed. So with that being stricken, it doesn't mean that, again, employees are going to be restricted more. I think they're going to have liberties there, but just as employees are interfacing with the public, we want to make sure that, again, looking at the value statements that are in place that this board has adopted years ago for the county, that everything that we do is in alignment with our mission statement and our values.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public want to speak on this item? Please get in line. If you can't, if you're not able to stand, please raise your hand. Okay, so only those that are in line are going to talk. Go ahead.
No.
No.
You have to turn on your mic.
Can you hear me now? Good morning. My name is Kimberly Sanchez Quintero. I live and work in District 5. You guys have already voted to have a say on the funds that county departments are able to spend on. I think that this is majorly restrictive on county departments on what events they recognize, and I hope that you do not vote for this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy Tawney, and I'm here to oppose this policy. It seems like an unnecessary overreach of the board's responsibilities. The county has department heads and staff that work closely with the community members and the organizations that will be affected by this, and I believe that they can make more informed decisions than the board can, because they're interacting daily with these people. Based on the origin of this policy, the money spent by the Health Department for condoms and literature, this policy seems to be directed at a certain demographic of our community. And now you've included every, all celebrations, so it doesn't look like that. But I think that's what it is. It seems unreasonable that five people's beliefs and prejudices can possibly restrict the celebration of an entire community. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Clarice, and I oppose this policy. It appears, well, first of all, my censorship alarms went off just a few minutes ago, so that was alarming to me. It appears that this policy would not utilize our county's employees' time and resources efficiently. We should continue to allow the professional department leaders to approve celebrations with their discretion. We have a very diverse population in Fresno County, and it would be inappropriate to allow the political and personal ideologies of board members dictate what can and cannot be recognized and celebrated. As a mother, grandmother, retired elementary teacher of 36 years, and avid readers, my friends and I are especially alarmed about the micromanaging of our county libraries. Our librarians are professionals who should and can be trusted to manage our libraries so that readers with diverse interests can feel welcome and find books they want to read. In the past, I've heard board members and people during public comments state that certain books they deem inappropriate should not be visible when young children walk into our libraries. This seems like a parent problem, not a library problem. I never sent my young children or grandchildren into a library alone. Parents and grandparents or guardians should be expected to go with their young children and let them know if a book or books are not acceptable to their family, and that's fine. But don't deny my children's rights to books because you don't want your children reading them. We still have freedom in our country. I know of some wonderful books that have been banned or removed from public and school libraries around our country because some find them objectionable. One lovely children's book is Tango Makes Three, and I recommend you all take a look at that book. It's the true story of two male penguins who, with the help of a kindly zookeeper at the Central Park Zoo, raise a chick together. It's about love, and I don't know how that can be objectionable. But this book has been consistently challenged for years. Let's keep censorship out of our celebrations in our libraries. Thank you.
Mic's on. We're good. Cool. My apologies if my voice gets shaky. I'm not exactly the most used to public speaking, but here we are. Hello, board. First off, my name is Fay. I'm here to oppose this policy, although I'm sure that's very obvious. And I'm sure that many of the opinions I'm going to share here are shared with my community. This policy is going to allow all of your personal politics to dictate how the county funds its support for local events. It shows bad faith towards our county departments and its leadership and staff. With this item, would be unable to make reasonable decisions and would be burdened with extra work to come before you to support whatever that they have been supporting in the past. This policy also doesn't necessarily clarify, as I'm sure you all had this conversation already, what activities would be restricted, would displays in libraries be restricted, even if they don't require county funds? Would events like Pride that have been supported by local county organizations and leaders, would they, would that no longer be funded because the politics of this board don't support it? And what is unimportant, according to this council, what minority groups wouldn't be supported, and what events would be deemed unimportant, I think is, I think it's best to trust our county leaders for their interface with the public, as opposed to all of your opinions and politics. I say, as many people before me have already agreed, that this is just a blatant attempt for control by this board, in the latest attempt to take power away from the local county organizations and also our minority communities, especially our lovely Supervisor Brettafield, who seems to love being a discounted version of our president. Thank you, Supervisors, for your time, except for you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Fresno County Board of Supervisors. My name is Kimmy. I'm new to California, new to Fresno, moved here from New York. I am present to urge you to oppose AP 81 because it unnecessarily restricts county departments from celebrating and recognizing important cultural, educational, and health observances, including Pride Month, without board approval. Celebrations such as Pride, Black History, Disability Awareness Month, and other community observances are not frivolous events. They are critical opportunities for inclusion, education, and outreach. They help our county build trust with the communities we serve, provide essential health and safety information, and create a sense of belonging for all residents. County department leaders already work closely with the public to plan and host events that align with their missions. Requiring board approval for any celebration adds bureaucratic delays, financial costs, and political barriers that prevent departments from responding quickly and appropriately to community needs. Worse, it allows and risks personal and bipartisan beliefs to determine whether or not Fresno County recognizes entire groups of residents. Policies like AP 81 send a message that some communities, like our LGBTQ+ neighbors, do not deserve to be celebrated or recognized unless politicians say so. That's not what I was told that Fresno County was about. I came here because I was told that this was probably one of the most diverse counties in California. I respectfully urge you to vote no on AP 81, and trust the county departments to continue their important work fostering inclusion, outreach through celebrations, and observances. Thank you for your time and for serving the people of Fresno County.
Hello, I'm back. Just to again stress the implications, oppose administrative policy 81. It does not benefit our community. I agree with the person before that the policy shows bad faith and undue lack of trust towards our county departments and its leadership and staff, that they aren't able to make reasonable decisions that best benefit the community regarding celebrations. These are people who worked hard for our community, who work closely with the community to meet their departmental goals, and quite frankly, it is insulting to your employees to insinuate, as was in the last meeting, that they would ever celebrate something like Porn Week. The alternative to this policy would be to continue, can you guys hear me okay? It breaks up. Okay. Continue to let the departments lead, that you yourself appointed the departmental leaders, approve celebrations with a reasonable discretion. The board mentions representing the community. While there are those in the community who you may not, who you might not celebrate some celebrations or recognitions, know that others in your community who value them is not simply a reflection of the county community members that share the board beliefs. The many celebrations are a display of the beautiful diversity of our community or recognize the humanity in different ways, and there is room for that variety. The county's participation in celebrations is a service to the community and also helps the county departments in meeting their goals by meeting people where they are. There are a lot of important county work in which the board supervisors' decisions are needed. This is superfluous to the work of the county and slows it down. County staff should not be burdened with more work and take energy and motivation away from the important work of the county, including costing the county financially and in manpower. I want to note that in the back of all these public comments, with thoughtful comments sharing with you why they all oppose, every single one of them pose, including the people here, people that represent you, including a former employee, parents, your constituents, that I had the privilege to read, all opposing, reflecting thoughts of others who have spoken publicly in public forums and don't feel heard or represented by the board. The board represents our community. This is your community. Among some of the things that were mentioned is bringing up that county agencies regularly host observances and programs, whether through library exhibitions, cultural events, health outreach, or educational activities that strengthen the community trust and create a sense of belonging. These are not trivial matters. They directly benefit residents by highlighting our county's diversity and ensuring that all people feel represented. Policy 81 inserts unnecessary barriers into, political barriers into decisions that should remain in the hands of staff who work closely with the public. And similar to what was mentioned, the underlying message is clear that some communities are valued while others are left uncertain.
Okay, thank you.
Hello again. Can you hear me?
Get a little closer to the mic.
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Catherine Burrell, and I have a business in Fresno. I've been in business now for 45 years. My business is a very inclusive business. I have a metaphysical store. That store includes all kinds of different religious bases and health services, and it is a place where there is not censorship of any particular party. No people are censored. Whoever wants to come into my store can come into my store, and they can find literature that there that they need. This isn't about my store. This is about censorship, and this is about values. You keep talking about values and what this is, these values this county Board of Supervisors was based on. I would like to hear what that is. Anybody?
This is public comment, not public question and answer.
No, I'm, this is very much based, because you keep referring to the, this article as being based on the values of this board, and that you have not stated publicly what the values of the board are. And I'm just wondering what those are, because you're talking about different celebrations. When I go into a, into a department and I see that there's Christmas trees, or there's Easter bunnies, or there's all of the Christian-based values, that those other values aren't being represented. I haven't walked into a department to see a Buddha or a Hindu deity, right? But what you really want to just get rid of is the LGBTQ, and so you... But what you really want to just get rid of is the LGBTQ, and so you cast this wide net to decide to not celebrate Pride, and that wide net is catching everything. You're not being, what are those values and when were they put into place? Because, you know, when I wanted to send my daughter to a private school, they told me she had to wear a skirt, she had to wear a dress, she could not wear pants. That was tradition. Really? Because it was also traditional not to have, you know, little girls be doctors or lawyers or politicians. And now we're having other traditions, this other value that's from wherever it's from. I still have 27 seconds. So I want to know what those values are, and I think it's not appropriate for you just to cast that out and say, these are our values, and not back those values up and bring those values into this century, to have them be from the turn of the century. Any answer?
Thank you very much. Yeah, go ahead. Yes, public comments closed.
So I'll answer that question now that public comment is closed. So on our website, you can go and take a look at what the vision of Fresno County is, which was adopted a few years ago, which is working together for equality of life for all, and the mission statement is to provide excellent public services to our diverse community. And for me, I can share with you that, looking at what we do, the things that we celebrate as far as holidays go, what's in this document is to recognize federal holidays and then other holidays or events that this board of supervisors ratifies through a resolution or proclamation are also events that we celebrate. But I think we've just shown right now about how we have different beliefs, and there's no way to represent all. So if we begin to start picking specific celebrations, there are others who say, hey, we're being excluded.
That's not happening.
So, I didn't interrupt you, please don't interrupt me. So again, what's important is, for me and with this policy, is that we celebrate those things which are as inclusive as possible. And so with that, I will second Supervisor Gary Bretta Feld's motion, which is on the table. And what I'm looking for is, there are many things that can become distractions for us. Our role as elected leaders, we are the only ones in the county who have faced all 1.1 million, or 1.1 million people of Fresno County, and we've been elected in our respective districts. All of us up here are very diverse, we have different backgrounds, and I respect all of that. But the best services that we can provide as a body are those when people come and interface with us, they don't know my politics, they don't know my sexual preferences, they just know that I work for the county and I'm here to serve them. So I can be very supportive of this policy based upon that.
Okay. You got a motion and a second, you want to do roll call?
Sure.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just also wanted to just respond. You know, every one of us up here is elected. We ran to represent our constituents, which is over a quarter of a million people each, 1.1 million people, as you said. And when I ran, it was very clear what I believe, what my beliefs are about how we improve our community. Nothing is hidden, I'm an open book, and people had the choice to either support me or support somebody else. And I'm sitting here along with four of my colleagues who also ran, representing what their beliefs are, what their values are, and not one of the department heads that we represent received one vote, not one. They're professionals, that's why we hire them. But this body, this board, sets policy. One might argue that those policies reflect the values of the board, which represents 1.1 million people. Now, you may not like it, I understand that, but that's democracy in action. That's people being represented by their constituents, and that's how their voices get heard, and that's why we create the policies that we do. So the values are reflected in the policies and the decisions that we make here, which is why it's important in terms of the people that are sitting up here. And I respect different points of view on this, and those who won't support this, and other things we will support and share. So with that, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, so am I. You want to roll call?
Supervisor Bretta Feld?
Yes.
Supervisor Magzik?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez?
No.
Supervisor Pacheco?
No.
Chairman Mendez?
Yes.
3-2, motion carries with Chavez and Pacheco voting no. We now move to item number eight. Under Public Works and Planning, conduct first hearing on an ordinance to amend chapter 11.24, speed limits of Fresno County Ordinance Code, section 11.24.070, to reflect various changes to ordinance codes as a result of recent traffic studies. Waive reading of the ordinance in its entirety and set second hearing for October 21st, 2025. Designate county council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of proposed ordinance and direct clerk of the board to post and publish required summary in accordance with Government Code, section 25124B1.
You're right, sorry.
Chairman, Board Members, Steve White, Public Works and Planning Director. The Admon Farni today is establishing speed limits around the Bradley New Ed Center. It's on the east side of the metro area, bounded by Shields, McKinley, Highland, and Leonard. We've chosen two streets. The back street, Highland, is the main entry to the complex. The front street, Leonard, is the secondary street. So with this action, we would reestablish the speed limits out for that complex while development continues to grow that way as part of the SITA Plan. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? That's it, bossly in your area.
Yeah, this is in my district, so I've had an opportunity to speak to Clovis Unified School District, and I've not heard from residents, but generally speaking, residents are pleased when we slow traffic down in and around schools and also in county areas, so I'm supportive of this item.
Just to note, there will be four traffic signals for this project. One is active under construction at Shields and DeWiff, many challenges on this project. Three additional by Vaile, and then two on McKinley, which will further address the issues Supervisor Magic indicated in speeding.
Okay. Any other comment from the board? Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. All in favor, so I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
We now move to item number nine. Under Public Works and Planning, approve amendment to text application number 386 and adopt ordinance modifying text of Fresno County zoning ordinance, article four, chapter 834.4.270B1, by incorporating personnel recreational vehicle storage into a limited agricultural zone district for properties located within one-half mile of adopted sphere of influence of city of Fresno contingent upon obtaining conditional use permit.
Mr. Chairman, I want to correct the record. I do not need to recuse myself based on the Levine Act. I thought I did, we checked into it, I do not, so I will be here to vote.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alexander Pretzer, Department of Public Works and Planning. This item comes to you with the unanimous recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission at its regularly scheduled June 26, 2025 meeting. As a legislative action, final action on an amendment to text application must be taken by your board. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions on the board? Is there any public comment on this item?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. Bill Robinson, I'm the one that submitted this, and it's reflective of a previous ordinance that you probably passed 10 years ago for the city of Clovis. So it's five words to an ordinance, and that's it, and I remain for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion approved.
Okay, you got a motion to approve? Second. All in favor, so I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number 10. Under Social Services, receive and discuss the Fresno County Mod C Quarterly Governing Body Report and Updates for the period of March 14, 2024 to June 13, 2025.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Ken Smith, Deputy Director of DSS, and I have Delvin Baker, Deputy Director of DSS as well. I'm here for the quarterly report out for Module C, our DSS Shelter. Quick review, update on what's going on in the last quarter is there's been no new policy or procedures this quarter. When it comes to any contact with law enforcement or community care licensing incidents, we've had 41 incidents, 40 of those being law enforcement contacts, which are unauthorized leads of absence. One of those also being contact with law enforcement, just with a youth needing some medical care. When it comes to reporting out our overstays, well, when it comes out to our population, we had a total of 62 entries into Mod C, with 38 of those unduplicated. Out of those, 23 were female, 15 were male, and at admission, 17-year-olds, they were 11, 16-year-olds, there were nine, 15-year-olds, there were nine, 14-year-olds, there were seven, and there were two 12-year-olds that were admitted during this quarter. We've had one youth that overstayed our 90s, and those reasons were, one, we had no willing or able relatives, and we also were not able to locate placement. When placement was also found, this youth refused to go to placement, so it took us some time to be able to work through that process and get that youth over their fears to be able to find secure placement for him. When it comes to our fiscal programs and auto reports, our salary and benefits and staffing costs are part of our DSS budget allocations. Our services and supplies and other charges are operational costs, which are also part of our DSS county budget.
Oh, forget that.
Oh, okay. And when it comes to any administrative actions, we have no in administrative actions against us at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Is any questions from the board?
Just, oh, go ahead.
Just, we still are the only county right now that operates a facility like Mod C that is licensed through the state, or are there other counties that have facilities similar to us?
We do have other counties that are similar to us. We are the only ones that operate under a specific interim license, though.
All right, excellent, thank you.
And I see that you had just 40 incidents of unauthorized AWOL, right? Nothing more serious than that.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I guess, does this need action?
It's just for me to for discussion.
Yeah.
Just a receive item and discussed.
What's that?
It was just a receive item.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll now move to item number 11, under Board of Supervisors Committee Reports and Comments.
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to announce to my colleagues that on Monday, September 15th, due to a family obligation, I will not be in attendance of our budget hearings. If Mr. Bretta Feld carries it over to two days, then I'll be here on the second day, but I will be unavailable on Monday, and wanted to let my colleagues know.
And I have no plans to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll be ready Tuesday.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Nathan.
Just some general comments. So obviously with the salt fire that was burning in Buddy's district and the Garnet Fire in mind, the Garnet Fire is still raging pretty good. There are a number of containment lines around it. I believe the fire still stands at about 14% containment. The southern edge of the fire has been buttoned up pretty well, but the fire continues to move north, east, and a little bit west. So really appreciate the county of Fresno, our resources, Cal Fire, that I've been talking with quite a bit. Also had an opportunity to visit the Incident Command Center there at Avocato Lake Park. Appreciate Public Works working with the U.S. Forest Service to make Avocato Lake Park available, because we had to get noticing out to the public to let them know that that park would not be available for different activities, and that's a very popular park that a lot of residents in Clovis as well as Sanger utilize. But seeing what's been put together there and how Incident Command is responding to that fire, it's not the only location that fire personnel go to report. There are other locations around Washawn, and even I've heard that there's quite a bit of activity taking place out of the Shaver area, too. So I plan on going up into the fire here in the next couple of days with Cal Fire Chief, so just wanted to provide my thanks to Public Works and other departments for all that they're doing on that fire. August 30th and 31st, there were Creek Fire Remembrance events that took place at Shaver and Huntington Lake. It's amazing to think that five years ago, the Creek Fire was raging, and now, you know, as we remember that, we've got the Garnet Fire burning. But it was an opportunity for, they brought in a Chinook helicopter, and I believe it was the helicopter and the personnel that were a part of the brave rescue out at Mammoth Pool five years ago, where there were over 100 individuals that were trapped from the Creek Fire. But really appreciate everybody raising money and continuing to try to help folks who live in the mountain area impacted by fires. Also want to announce, so my friend and colleague, Mike Briggs, passed away about 10 days ago, and he had a battle with cancer that he lost. But Mike is the one who gave me a start in politics, and I'll always be thankful for Mike kind of teaching me and shepherding me around and really showing me what it takes to raise money and how to get elected to office. So he gave me my start, and I'll always be eternally grateful for that. And he was, of course, an assemblyman in Fresno, he was a councilman in Fresno, and we did a memorial resolution for him, which was part of our packet today. Also Buddy and I did a memorial resolution for President Joseph Castro, who, his whole family is amazing. He was an amazing man, very humble, did great things for our community, and we're very proud of the life that he lived, and we send our condolences to the family there as well. That's all I have.
Louis Yellen?
Yeah, just really briefly, Mr. Chair, I just want to echo some of the sentiments that my colleague mentioned in adjourning this meeting in the memory of President Joseph Castro, and just publicly express our condolences to his family for all the great work that he did here in the Central Valley. I know there are some services that will be coordinated, but just wanted to thank you guys for bringing this forward to the board. Thank you.
Here you go.
Yeah, I just want to echo the same thing. Dr. Castro was somebody that I met and got to do some work with, one of the most humble people you would want to meet, and when you knew his life story, the accomplishments he had are amazing, and how he helped so many students, minority students, achieve their dreams and their goals. So he was quite a man, and I do celebrate his life and offer my serest condolences to his family. He was a wonderful person who changed lives in dramatic ways, and I wish his family the very best.
Okay. Just, I've got a couple of things. One is, you know, Nathan was talking about a containment in a fire. Well, the salt fire can't, what they do on those fires is actually try to build, they sometimes have to let them go up and over a ridge, and then when it, on the other side, they're making a containment line. Sometimes they've done it three and four days before the fire actually gets there, but that's the only place they can stop it. So if you, the way it's reported, it's kind of reported weird, because it could say, well, it's 15% contained, but in reality, they already know what's going to be burned. I don't know if people can understand that concept. And then if it does not jump the containment line, then it's considered contained. But up until that point, they will not say it's contained because it could jump the containment line. So I just want to make that, and I think in the 17 fire, I think it ended up burning 109,000 acres roughly, and Mark Benjamin sitting over there, he used to work for the Fresno Bee, but he was a really good friend of mine, and we were talking about the fire because I just went up there, and I told him, well, it's going to burn 109,000 acres. So we had a discussion, and he goes, oh, okay, that's the containment line that's out there that they're building. I said, yes, and it burned 109,000 acres. So that's how those were, a little different than the Sierra Fire, because you can make a containment line, and the fire's so intense that it just jumps it. So it's a little different deal. The other thing I want to talk about is Dr. Castro, you know, actually knew his wife, Mary, for a long, long time. She's actually grew up between Leighton and Riverdale, and I'd once told Dr. Castro, I said, you know, for the first time in history, the president of this university is the same as the student body. They had the, the student body has the same issues you had when you first started, when you went to college. And I said, this is a very unique period. And I said, this is a very unique period, that the student body can actually look at their president and say, he's us. I'm also looking forward, my friends in the audience, I think he's going to speak in public session, in the public comment, Manuel Cunha, and I looked very forward at what Manuel has to say. So with that, we'll go to the next item, which is Board Appointments.
Item twelve.
You got two?
Mr. Chairman, I have two. To the Behavioral Health Board, I'd like to appoint Marcus Fuller to the vacant-at-large public interest veteran, veteran advocate seat previously held by Manuel Pacino, which expired on four-one of twenty-twenty-seven. And to the Foster Care Standards and Oversight Committee, appoint Joe Oliveras to the vacant District Five seat previously held by Ed Avala, which expired on one-six-twenty-five.
Okay, I've got one. The Foster Care Standards and Oversight Committee, appoint Vincent Latham to the committee member position previously held by Connie Waltrip.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one. I want to reappoint Ted Tourian, T-O-U-R-I-A-N, to the Assessment Appeals Board.
Okay, Brian, you don't have?
No.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. All in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move to public presentation.
Item thirteen, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons deciding to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
I'll try to stay back a little bit. Again, I want to thank the entire board for recognizing Dr. Castro. I know that Jose Ramirez today couldn't be here, but he wanted to come because he heard what you folks had done or doing. And Jose Ramirez, the boxer, he spoke with Dr. Castro that Friday before he passed. Again, I thank you very much for recognizing a gentleman, but a person that was really appreciated by the students and by the industries, because Dr. Castro did reach out to all of us to work with the university and how it was to move forward. So again, thank you so much. I'm here this morning, Manuel Cunha, N.C. Farmers League, also a member of the San Joaquin Valley Unified Air Pollution Control District Advisory Committee, also the Agricultural Technical Advisory Committee. We formed this air district in nineteen-ninety-one. Now, some of you are twinkles and eyes of people, some of you are a little bit older, but we formed this air district because we had eight air districts going on in the valley. It was very difficult for our businesses to operate in different counties, because different rules. So we formed the San Joaquin Valley to deal with the air issues. The SIPs that are submitted to the state, to the federal government, to EPA, is by the San Joaquin Valley Unified Air Pollution Control District. And I'd like to recommend, also note that Buddy has served on that board for years, and has been a great representative. There are eight supervisors on that board, and then cities, and then a medical person, and then two appointees by the governor. My concern today is that the, the County Board of Transportation, COG, has intervened into an air quality issue, because it got a grant under the Biden administration for a million dollars. Now, I do know a lot of those grants are being yanked back, being told to pay back. But they are dealing with air quality issues on agriculture and other industries. That's not their authority. The COG is to take care of transportation and making sure our cities have the viable means of mobility and all that, not worrying about a SIP modeling and all of those things. That's the air district. And if you need something for the COG to submit for a project to the State Department of, fine, go to the air district. I don't need to have eight counties suddenly going into air quality issues. That's why we formed a one. And that's what their job is. The air district does tremendous amount of work, and it has the monitors, it has the modeling. And then we have several committees. So I'm greatly concerned that the COG has taken off on this because of some money, because the air district didn't want it. Well, there's a reason why the air district didn't want it. And that needs to be realized, that the air district does the air for the entire valley, and monitoring the smoke that's going on. So thank you very much.
I, I think what Manuel's driving at is that the, with that grant, the COG is out of their lane. That lane is for the air district. They have the expertise there, and that should have never been accepted by the COG, because that's not their lane, and they're basically doing something, they have no knowledge of what they're doing.
Correct, thank you.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, on that, I have pretty significant concerns about that. I don't know if there's anything the Board of Supervisors can do to just reach out to COG, and I know that we have representatives here who serve on COG, but I do oppose COG getting into those spaces. They need to focus on, on transportation issues, not on issues that other entities deal with.
Right. And we can tell by what they're doing with Measure C, their management ability is pretty, pretty shaky. And that's a, that's actually a good comment. And Gary, you've been aware of this, so...
Yes, Mr. Cunha let me know, and I will certainly be sensitive to it, should it come up with the COG and agree with all of the comments made.
Yeah, okay. All righty, no more public presentation, we'll go...
Closed session, public presentation?
What's that?
Closed session, public...
Is there any public presentation for closed session? Hearing none. County Council.
Will there be anything to report out?
I would not expect anything to report out today.
Okay. That's just traditional, when we get to this point, we just...
Got it.
Give you the floor.
You may entertain a motion in a second to adjourn following closed session.
Okay, to have a motion to adjourn following closed session?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Hey, Isaac, hang on.